I'd like to welcome everybody to the Nevada Community School District Board of Education Meeting, January 6th, 2025. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let me see, we have. And I would seek approval of the agenda.
Second.
We have motion in a second to approve the agenda, in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we have a meeting. Any public comment?
None.
As we have no information tonight, let us move into our action agenda 5.1, the High School Description Guide. And Dr. Einswiler will be walking us through that. Good evening, Doctor.
Evening, everybody. First, I just wanted to say thank you for flexibility. We had some unforeseen family circumstances the last time I was supposed to be here. Typically, I don't like to saddle you with something, and as many edits as there were in this course guide without like being here to give some explanations. So thanks for the flexibility and the understanding. Before I kind of go into pieces of it, there's a couple of things that I think are probably important to know. This year, as we worked through the course guide, one of the things that we wanted to do was take out courses that were in the course guide that we have really not offered for several years. They've just stayed in and we, as we added and added and added. There were courses that stayed there, but we either don't have the personnel to offer them or the class hasn't fit and we haven't had interest in it in several years. And most of the courses that you see changes to in here, we have not offered in my five years. So while it looks like on paper that there are a lot of courses, like why are we removing all of these classes from the, or all these courses from the course guide? The reality is, is we're probably just being a bit more true to what we're offering as opposed to keeping things in just year after year after year that we really don't offer and we have no capacity to offer. Now, if we hired somebody and they had a different set of credentials and we could bring back a dual-credit language arts course or something like that, these courses are still within our system, but I think that that's just like an important piece to note as you're looking through it, just because there were so many changes that were part of that. So that was one thing that I wanted to share. The other piece that I wanted to share is we are, some of the, the big changes in classes, again, trying to kind of reorganize and rethink so we have the best pathways for kids and pathways that our students are open and interested in taking as well. And, and we've had a couple of additions as well. So just kind of working down through the edits page. The graduation requirements, we are adding a half-credit each year for Cub Connections. And that's listed in there and kind of spelled out as we would go forward. So in 25, 26, what would that look like in terms of elective credits? And what we, we're requiring students to return every week for Cub Connection. And it's for a variety of things. We're doing some life skills pieces, but we're also doing Zelo, which is our career and academic planning. And so our state is requiring us to do a lot more career and academic planning than we have in the past. Not that we have in the past, we just have to do a few more things with it. More reflections, a little bit more in-depth. And when we moved to Zelo last year, the intention was that that was going to give us a platform to do that at a, at a deeper level and at a more meaningful level as opposed to kind of a check the box. Now it's a little bit more of the things we're doing. But we're requiring students to come back for those things. So because of that requirement, we wanted to offer some credit for that time that kids are coming. That credit also aligns to what is, if I'm kind of call it like its counterpart. For students who are online, we have an online learner credit because we also require those students to come in weekly or bi-weekly to check in with a, an adult here in the building. So they typically check in with Mrs. Gint or Mrs. Frieders. They get a half-credit for that as well. So as I progress through high school, if I'm online, I'm getting, be able to get that half-credit elective for my online learner credit. If I'm in person, my expectation is that Cub Connections credit. So in both circumstances, that kind of walks its way up. What we didn't want to do and the reason that we suggested adding that to our elective credit expectation is we didn't want to dilute and remove the expectation to take elective classes. So in four years, if we didn't up the graduation requirements, I would have to take four less elective credits in order to graduate on the same type of diploma. So that's the reason and the rationale for some of those changes and additions. That's a pretty major update and a major change for us. Our staff kind of mentioned this and talked about it. We are asking students to do quite a bit more reflection and quite a bit more work during that time. We also made changes to the schedule to accommodate that work. Felt like that was a necessary add and wanted to kind of describe that a little bit in detail. Questions that you have about that particular change since it's a bit more nuanced?
Just one piece that I would add to that. Obviously, that has some policy implications in regard to how many our graduation requirements, which is kind of a policy. So our intent would be finish this school year and then bring that update to you probably in June or July that would reflect this change. So just something that will, would be coming should you approve.
And we didn't want to add it and start the credit, the credit, receiving that credit this year. So that's why we're bringing it in June. So this would, students would start to receive credit for this starting next year. And then it would be a four-year roll to get us to the right graduation number. And then in 2028, 29, we would then be at that policy number and that credit number from that point forward. Other questions, any questions on that?
Well, from the first time I looked at this, both online and in paper form, on your graduation requirements and your social studies. Tell me why you're going to drop US government and US history and add European history?
Yeah, so US AP government hasn't been offered for several years. So that again is more of like a realignment and kind of just acknowledging what we're truly offering and what we're not offering. So that is a pretty simple, like we're just, we haven't offered it in my five years and I don't believe we offered it before that. Last time that class would have been offered probably was when Meg Frieders was teaching social studies. So it would have been pre TLC, so might have been as far back as like 2015, 2016, give or take. That would be my understanding of that. The AP US history and the switch to AP European history. In the past four years, we have struggled mightily to get student interest in AP US history. We have, it initially started and we had really low numbers. And I'm saying like three to four in the first year. It dropped off and in a year we had zero. We reevaluated and spent some time together, Mr. Johnson, who's the teacher, myself. We repitched the class and we tried to hit a little bit more on AP classes can get you, give or take about six credits of college coursework. And so we tried to pitch the class in terms of the college credit that you could get. The following year, we got three and then two dropped. This last year, we got zero and it, and actually we got four this last year. But in that particular year, not only did we pitch the class in that particular way, we worked directly with our tag coordinator. We made personal calls and connections with families about the class and wanting to get into the class. And we still only got four. And so because that, that used to be a pathway that would take up, let's say if it got 15, 20 kids, those 15, 20 kids would come out of US history and be on that AP US history track. So as a result, you would have a bit reduced US history numbers. Right now, our US history classes are bursting. We have a bit of a spin-off that one of our teachers, our, our special education teachers, who is history endorsed, is taking because one of the class numbers was at like 36. The rest of the classes were all at 25. And so it really kind of boils down much more to the student interest piece. So when we then kind of moved away from it and made the decision, hey, we think we need to go. And I talked to Mr. Johnson about it. Mr. Johnson agreed. I think it just needs to be US history that appears to be where things are moving. I approached Mr. Snyderman, our tag coordinator, about the possibility of teaching a US history course. We talked about AP US history, but felt we were going to have the same issues that we had before. And so we looked at another pathway. If we did not add AP European history, we, that would be pro, it would be the only strand of English, science, math, and social studies. It'd be the only core strand that we didn't feel like had an accelerated path to it and a more pushed pathway. So the pathway that we would be looking at with AP European history would be that students could take that for their world history credit, just in lieu of world history. They would take US history before they would get to that. And then that AP European history would be a junior, senior laden class, trying to keep that strand of, of kind of enriched, like an enrichment strand in social studies, but maybe trying to come at it a different way to see if we get more interest.
That's more palatable.
Long story short, we just, even after several, several attempts, we couldn't get numbers into the US history group that we wanted to.
So the underlayment of AP US history is history? And we couldn't get the handoff done?
Yeah.
So what's the underlayment to AP European history?
Yeah, I think the, the hope would be that we're going to try to set it up in the same way. We're going to try and set it up so that the pathway is a little bit more predetermined. I think what would happen with a lot of times we would get to AP Europe, or we'd get to AP history and you'd be faced with, am I going to go AP history and then come back into like the social studies strand through psych, soc, and then government? Or am I just going to go US history and then come back into the strand? Where AP European history, we felt like we needed to change a bit of the pathway itself. So we're a little bit forcing the hand into like, hey, when you decide to go on this track, this is what that track looks like. And it's not just like a veer out, it's like in a different, like it's a different pathway altogether. So the pathway that a student would take if they were accelerating or in doing an enrichment track of history would be to take US history first, then take the AP European history and then kind of go forward with government psych, soc. So it really like, I don't want to say it funnels kids a bit more, but it, it doesn't say like, hey, here's your, like right now you have to choose between these two. And sometimes when you get to that moment with a junior, they might choose the path of least resistance.
How many numbers when we're talking about this? I would be interested to see as we go into the signup. How many numbers would you like to see AP European history? What would you call a win?
A win?
Yes.
10 plus would be a win in the year one.
Thank you.
I think it has chances, I think it's got legs to get 15 to 20 on that pathway. I think we're going to lean heavily on Mr. Snyderman to kind of see kids into that pathway and understand, you know, I kind of correlate a little bit of like an English acceleration and a social studies acceleration. I could be really gifted in math, that doesn't mean I need to be accelerated in everything. However, social studies kind of lends itself into that English track as well. So we're going to kind of lean on Mr. Snyderman for that. I mean, and, and the other piece that I would say is I'm excited to have Mr. Snyderman teaching and getting directly involved in the teaching of that course with kids. He does some of that work with our middle school students and their tag enrichment program. When kids get to high school, they typically, our tag and enrichment comes through different course allocations and it's more talking through pathways and how best to meet. So I'm kind of excited for that option. Mr. Snyderman's social studies endorsement or endorsed. It, it seems like it can add another SCED, another option for our kids. And, and really without much, you know, without much adds. He's, he's pretty excited to, to offer the course. And we're just need to find the right place for it to be in the schedule because of some of the flexibility that, that his tag work lends itself to.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk to? Kind of dominating on that?
Well, it's good questions. I mean, there, there are changes.
Some things just jump out, other things I get while you, you know, we've moved in and out. You know, I've looked at these things over the years and, you know, we have best intentions when they're initially offered. If they don't, you know, pick up speed and take off, well, you just pull them back down.
You bet. And I think that's really what's going on. We did, if you see the, there's a number of like AP classes that came out. A lot of those classes that were listed in the course guide were online courses. So we shifted that. So instead of changing and updating those online courses every single year, kind of shifted that to here's where our online course options are, the Bell and Blank Center. And we kind of linked that piece in there. Much like, instead of trying to update all of the college courses that we could possibly have, we kind of linked that in so that that catalog was available. Another, I would say like kind of shifting change was we used to run for art, we would run art exploratory to Draw Paint 1, Draw Paint 2. And then we'd have like the Sculptures, Ceramics. And then we kind of mixed in this Drawing DC and Painting DC. And it's a, it's a lot of funky prep work to try to get all that done when you're teaching painting and drawing and then the painting or the drawing DC. And we felt like if we aligned those a little bit more to truly a drawing class and then attached it to a drawing dual-credit course, we attached a painting class only to a painting dual-credit course. We created a lot more entry points for kids. So a lot more flexibility in their ability to get into art classes and things like that. And I think to support Ms. Teedman and her efforts, it's a lot easier to plan when you know what's coming in is drawing. I can get materials ready for that particular medium. It's a lot easier to do that. And so that was another kind of pretty re, big reworking that we had, but we feel really kind of excited about that. Ceramics 1 and Ceramics 2 are going to do the same, the same basic things so that there's entry points and flexibility throughout. So we will have a Drawing 1 and DC, Drawing DC kids in the same room, working the same time, just different curriculum, but both working on drawing. Just like we'll have Ceramics 1 and Ceramics 2 DC kids working together in the same room at the same time, different curriculum, painting the same way. So now if I'm a Drawing kid, I have two classes that I can get into. If I'm a Drawing DC kid, I get two classes I can get into. Same thing with the Ceramics. And I think it will really open some things up for art and for our, our fine arts group as well. Last thing was we added yearbook. Lori Stevenson has made, done our yearbook for the last, at least the, the time that I've been here. She does it herself. She just makes the whole book and does it all on her own. She informed Mr. Smith and I that she was going to do it for two more years, which I appreciated her very Lori Stevenson sharing in advance and being planned out. And so I asked her to sit down with me and think about a transition plan. It's almost no chance that we find an individual who will put together the entire yearbook. So I felt like we needed to have a plan for how to go about that. So the intention of adding yearbook for next year is that we'll have an advisor who will run it, not Mrs. Stevenson. We will have a student group who will work through the yearbook and kind of work through pieces. Mrs. Stevenson will be pretty instrumental in supporting those two throughout that first year of understanding what it takes and what pictures should look like and how to edit, how to put things together and put pieces together. Help them through the first year and the first building of that book so that they have a little bit of guidance. And then the following year would have been the year that Mrs. Stevenson was done doing the yearbook anyway. She will be done doing the yearbook and then the yearbook class would take over really the, the, the full reins of that without as much support. So it's kind of our off-ramp to Mrs. Stevenson and our, our best efforts to also make sure we have a yearbook because that feels pretty essential, so.
She's on Schedule B for this, the yearbook?
I don't know that for certain. I'm not sure like what, what her contract reads, but.
Okay.
I, I could be wrong.
Well, it's just like we, you know, we look at what we all have as our Schedule B. And I understand it's going to get bigger tonight.
Maybe it will.
Yep. Wonder if there are any dollars attached.
Historically, have we had a yearbook class previously?
There was one previously. I think Mrs. DeYoung ran the yearbook course in the past. I don't know how long ago that was. And then I don't think it had maybe a ton of interest. And I think that's when Mrs. Stevenson took it over and, and started working through it. I know she's got a couple of kids that she kind of works with that are pretty into pictures and, you know, photographs and things like that. So I think our hope and our goal is to try to really identify a handful of students that we could bring into that class. The yearbook typically is a student-driven group. It typically has a period attached to it or allotted to it. And then, you know, they're working through a variety of things. So, you know, pictures and deadlines and I, I think there's a really a lot of really good value in the course. I, my wife was a yearbook advisor and I saw a lot of really neat things that the kids did. But we haven't had it in a little while, so we're going to have to just be really intentional about how we get it off the ground.
Yeah, you know your window, so I guess good luck.
Yeah, yep, good luck indeed.
Anybody else have any questions? Jumped around on this. You're the one that takes these classes. You got any questions, that'd be a good time.
I have a question. This is back to the US history thing, but it's like, or like the new AP European history. I think students, just how I feel like the general attitude toward those social study classes has been is like, it's pointless, it's boring. I don't want to go into anything with social studies, so I'm not going to take these harder classes. Like that's kind of like, I do not plan on going into anything with social studies. So I'm like, why would I, my energy into taking like a harder class even though it's there for me? And so I think like when AP European history is introduced, like it should also be introduced with like an explanation of why history classes are important and like what careers exactly people could use these classes for.
Yep. And I also think like AP European history would, if you pass the AP test with, I think it's like a three or, or more, would also like suffice for six credits, basically a Western Civ. Western Civ 1 and Western Civ 2 would be the two classes, which essentially like get six credits of humanity, like your, your humanity credits that you'd get out of the way too, right, that you could kind of check that box off as well. So, you know, I think some of those pieces, we've tried to kind of lay the groundwork for. I, I think we're going to, my hope is we're kind of taking a little bit of a different approach to how we try to get kids kind of working in and on that pathway. I think it just, it comes down to like, well, why would I take that? Well, when we're building your path and we're building your kind of four-year plan and I kind of get in that track, then it makes a little bit, it's a little bit easier to kind of work through and kind of finish it and see that track out. I think when we get to that moment of like, I'm two years in, do I take it or I not? Bah, I'm fine, I just won't, right? I think that's kind of what's been happening. You know, not to, you know, to any discredit to Mr. Johnson. He's, he's done a lot of hard work in trying to sell the course and, and get kids interested and making contact and things like that with, with students. But it just wasn't taking and I think it was just, he got to that time and I'd rather put my effort and energy over here. And so I, I think we just kind of have to fund a little, little bit more than, and a little bit earlier.
Yeah. And I saw, I saw that different track during Cub Connections today. I was like, oh, that's new.
Yeah.
It looks, it looks more appealing because it looks more like straightforward, like, okay, this is what I'm doing. It's clearly a more advanced track because you're not doing world history. And I think, I mean, to me like that was more appealing than just like all over the place.
Yep. And we talked about, you know, whether AP European history should be a, a potential replacement for world history. And we just believed and agreed that like, that was, those, those two could be some equivalent work, if you would. And it wouldn't preclude somebody who was a junior or a senior who had gone on the other track from also taking AP European history if that was something that they really came into and loved. But we just felt like the track would help us get more kids kind of on that pathway, if you will, so. Usually your predecessors would have like 70 grammatical edits for me, things that I would lose. So task for next year.
I'm sure we can find some free time.
Oh, I'm certain, I'm certain.
I would love to have Ben.
Oh, yeah. Ben, my first year or one of my first two years, just like, how about this and this and this? And I'm like, all right, Ben, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And he wasn't done.
Oh, no, he wasn't.
One of my favorite memories of sitting on this board, watching that night. All right, with that, appreciate it. I mean, that's why you're kind of here because you see it as some consumer, we see it as an implementer. Now, because to us, it's just here. You're the one that is taking the choices and taking the classes. It's an action item.
I'll move approval of the High School Course Description Guide for 2025, 26 as presented to the board.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to approve the course guide description for the coming school year 25, 26. Any further questions of Dr. Einswiler? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, appreciate your insights. Well, our athletic director would like to talk to us about a bowling program. I look forward to hearing about that at this.
Well, thanks for having me, crew. I've got some information. We talked a little bit, shared some information on a potential bowling program here at Nevada. And you should have some of the information that I shared from the document there. But I did want to detail some and pick out some key points and different things. And take any questions or discussion. First though, Marty, I did, we, we talked a little bit before about football. Coach Kleeman did confirm that Anthony Eaton has offered and accepted a Shrine Bowl appearance for the year.
My board member comment.
I thought I'd.
Thank you, I appreciate the follow-up on that.
Thought I'd let you know.
That's what, that's impressive.
Taking care of business.
That's what it was.
The item in hand, bowling. For the last couple of years, we've dipped and dabbled around asking students and getting interest surveys out for bowling. A lot of that bowling push has come from SportsBowl itself and a couple of community members that really like bowling, maybe don't have kids in the community, but see the potential benefits of bowling for students and student athletes at Nevada. So over the last couple of years, as SportsBowl pushed for a bowling team with maybe not as much interest from students, continued to gather information about, about student interest. And we've come to the point where I feel it's appropriate to propose and start a bowling program for 2025, 2026 school year. My, my proposal doesn't come maybe without some concerns, which I'll talk about here. But some things that are benefits of bowling that I have listed there. I found through my, through my interest surveys that bowling, bowling interest was from students who are typically less involved. A lot of the students who indicated, yes, 100%, I'd like to be a bowler, are students who aren't involved in anything else. And I thought that was interesting and is a reason why I think now might be the time to start implementing a bowling program because we can get some more students involved. And we know through reading research left and right that students that are involved in activities are more likely to do well in high school and thus do well after they leave high school. And I think that that's a, that's a strong reason why we continue to support high school activities, whether it's band, choir, drama, or sports at a high level. You can see other reasons why bowling would be a benefit. Teamwork and collaboration, there are scholarships available. One other thing, it, it's unique to offer lifetime activities, right? A lot of our football players, when they leave, may never play another snap of football. But you can bowl until you're 75, 80 years old. So it's offering a lifetime activity that you can get involved with as well. A couple of the potential concerns that I wanted to outline with a bowling proposal were the interest surveys didn't come back as strong as I would have liked them to. And I think that we do a lot of things here at Nevada. We do them right and we do them right the first time and we make sure they're going to be done right. I have some concerns that the interest survey didn't show enough interest for students currently and ate. I have some concerns that the interest survey didn't show enough interest for students currently in eighth through eleventh grade. Um, some of my concerns have been offset that I see what Sports Bowl is doing by providing some middle school programming and they have pretty good numbers in that like four, five, six area. Um, younger students who are participating in bowling eh in the youth. Um, so I'm gonna flip over to uh some of the keynotes from the data. The interest survey came back that twelve total girls showed interest. Um, five girls were a hundred percent interested and seven were seventy-five percent interested or less. The way I lay out the question when I ask it in the interest survey, I give them five different options. The first one is hundred percent, I'm all in, I can't wait. I have a seventy-five percent interested, I'd have to, I'd want some more information, but I'd be pretty interested. Uh, fifty percent, um, I'd need a lot more information, I could be persuaded. Uh, fifty percent, hey, I could, but I'm gonna have to give up working at Fairway or or I'd have to give something up. So, um, when I've done these surveys for girls tennis, boys tennis, girls wrestling and esports, no student who has ever indicated seventy-five percent or less interest has ever actually participated in this, in this sport. Zero, not, not one. Um, typically about fifty percent of those who say a hundred percent end up participating. Um, so for esports, we were at like eighty students who said a hundred percent. We had about roughly forty out through the year, that year. Um, tennis, we had about uh fifty girls who showed interest at a hundred percent. We had about twenty-five out that first year. Boys tennis was uh thirty-five or forty, we had about twenty kids out that first year. So the data's been pretty consistent that about half of the people who say a hundred percent end up going out. Um, so that's a bit concerning for me, because like I said, when, when we want to do this, we want to do it right and we want to do it right the first time. But I do think that bowling, um, there's an ease of, an ease of starting to bowling, where maybe a friend that said a hundred percent can grab a friend and and end up going bowling, even with no experience. I think someone with very little experience can go be part of a bowling team and still have fun. Um, it's not like maybe going out for girls basketball and the team's not good and it's eighty-five to ten. That maybe feels different than when you bowl a seventy at your first bowling meet. So I do think that there is some avenues for some recruitment. Um, I also believe that Scott at Sports Bowl um is going to, he's very, he's a very good marketer. Um, and I think that he'll market that there will be a bowling team, that he'll be collaborating with the school with. And I think there's some potential for him to talk some individuals into going out for bowling. So I do have some concerns with the survey results. I do think that some of those concerns for me um are less because of what I see them doing at the middle school level. And I do feel like there's less of a barrier to entry to get into bowling and hopefully we can get some friends to take friends with them. The boys' numbers, the nineteen total, eleven at a hundred percent. We're getting a little bit closer because you need at least six to field a varsity team, um, to play all the, all of the different games that they play. Um, so I feel more comfortable on the boys' side. The girls' side, I think it's gonna take a little work, maybe a little work by myself, a little work from a potential new coach, little work from the Sports Bowl to get some people out. Another potential concern and something I had brought up with you before is the potential of co-opping with a local school, Colonesco or Collins Maxwell. Um, after looking into that, um, if we were to start a bowling program in twenty-five, twenty-six, we would be roughly the fifth or sixth largest team in the lowest class, which would be one A. And the addition of any school anywhere around us would bump us to two A. So to give you some context on that, um, Durant is the largest school in one A. They have a, a bed score, which is your nine, ten, eleven graders of three hundred and ninety-six. We're roughly about three hundred and seventy-four. Um, Gilbert is probably a local example, they're in one A with a three hundred and ninety bed score. So they would be the second largest in one A, Gilbert, which is pretty similar sized, I would see it's such, someone in our peer group. If you bump up to that next class, it extends from Xavier at four hundred and twenty-nine students, all the way up to Council Bluffs Lincoln at one thousand and twelve students. So the difference between being in a one A class and two A class in bowling is exponential if you go up that class. Um, so I would reserve to see how many students a potential co-op would actually give to us before entering that co-op. If a Collins Maxwell or Colinesco said, yes, I'm interested, I've got ah or two kids that will come, I'd be a little leery to do it just because of the potential of us not being able to compete as well at that state level where we'd get individual and team awards. Um, so I'd have, I, I need more time to decide whether a co-op would be something that we potentially want to get into. I would really need to be persuaded that they would bring enough to the table to outweigh that concern of jumping up a class.
Can you help me remember, did we not take several wrestlers from the role or Colonesco on a bump basis? To fill out, I mean, I'm just, all I'm doing is just pulling back from a dim memory that we kind of had crossed this bridge with the wrestling program and because we did not want to jump classes and that's a worthy endeavor.
I'll give you two examples and they're both wrestling, actually.
Go ahead.
Um, on the boys' side, um, Colonesco had reached out, said, hey, us and Collins Maxwell, we're not going to be wrestling together. Is there any potential that we could come wrestle with you? And my answer was, yes, we'd love to have you, as long as it doesn't bump us to the two A level.
Right.
And at the time, it wouldn't have bumped us to the two A level. But if either school had increased enrollment by about fifteen students or a combined seven and seven or whatever number to go ten more, we would have been at the two A level. So I told Colonesco, if we would accept you into a co-op, but we would drop you if it looked like we were going to be two A instead of one A, we would take the one A with the kids that we have and you'd have to figure out what you're doing. And they rightfully were like, I would like some consistency.
Right.
I'm like, I totally understand that. And so right now, we're actually sharing with Collins Maxwell for boys wrestling, told them the same thing. We're happy to have you, as long as we stay at the one A level and we are the second largest one A team. And it's not by a ton of kids, like it was by the skin of the teeth this year. In which case, had we gone over, I would have had to say, hey, guys, I'm sorry, you're gonna, you're gonna have to figure something out. But that was something that was pre-communicated with them. On the other side of it.
Same thing.
What's that?
Kind of see that being the same thing with the bowling program?
Well, the other side of it is this, um, we started girls wrestling and we invited Colonesco and Collins Maxwell to come over and it was all one class. Um, so everyone was in the same class when that happened. Now it's two classes. Had we dropped Colonesco or Collins Maxwell this year, we would have been in the lower class and we would be ranked really high in the lower class. Um, if we were there. I felt like we got into it together as a commitment from the start. We started girls wrestling together. I'm not cutting, we started a program together, I'm not gonna cut you out on the backside just because we'll go up a class. Because it was something we built from the ground up together. With boys wrestling, it wasn't a ground up together thing. We both had our separate programs. Yeah, you can come here if you need us for a year until you can grow your program back. Collins Maxwell and Colonesco have never had a girls' program, because we invited them in and we said, let's build a girls' wrestling program together. So the thought never crossed my mind to drop them this year. At any point in time, we could have dropped one or the other schools and we would have been in the lower class. Um, but we built it together and we're gonna stick together for girls wrestling. If we built bowling together, I would have a hard time going back and saying, hey, we're gonna, when we cross the line, we're gonna drop you, if it was something we built together. If it were something we started for a year or two and we got down the road and there was some really interested Col- uh, Colonesco or Collins Maxwell kids and we could have those same boys wrestling type conversations, I would have a hard time honoring uh dropping them if we were to build it together, like the girls' wrestling situation. That make sense?
Well, using the numbers from your survey, you seem to be on the threshold of being able to put a boys' bowling team together, but not a girls' team.
Uh, I, given the survey data, if it plays out like everything else has, and, and listen, I wasn't walking the halls begging kids to go out for girls tennis either. But I'll be in the halls like, hey, what do you think about bowling? Eh eh, and we'll hopefully have a couple of teachers, you know, we'll know that maybe we need to push some people to that. Um, there'll be a little bit more recruitment for that. We didn't have to recruit for esports, kids wanted to esport. We didn't have to recruit for tennis, kids wanted to play tennis. Girls' wrestling, we had a number of girls that wanted to participate. There might be a little more recruitment that has to go on here. Like I said, I think a little bit of the, my, my uh thinking that it will work is that there is limited barrier to entry to throw a ball down the lane. You might not be great at it to start, but you can grow at it pretty quickly if you want to put the time and work in. That would be my hope. Right now, if the survey data held true and we were only Nevada, we would be able to support a boys' team at a varsity level and the girls would be, it would have to be stitched together. Um, so I would hope that we could recruit some girls in.
Okay, I have a question for you regarding that. Is there anything that would preclude a, a girl from going out to, for boys uh bowling?
We could co-edit, um, eh, and we've seen obviously when girls participate with boys, girls are at a larger disadvantage. You could look at it as a co-ed, so we could get to a spot and say, we've got no girls and it's a week before the season. You can co-edit, as long as you don't offer, as long as you don't offer the, as long as you don't have a girls' site offered, then you could co-ed, so it would be similar to what PCM does for soccer. They had ran a girls' soccer team for a long time, couldn't support the numbers, so now they run a co-ed soccer team that plays on the boys' side.
I knew there are situations like that, so.
They are situational. My ultimate hope would be is that we could support both.
Sure.
Um, and.
In the case that there might be one or two girls that are really interested in bowling, this might get us a bridge year of getting them interested and.
We could look at, we could look at co-opping for a year, two, or as long as we needed to, if, if that were the case, yep. Um, I, I have a couple other notes, I just want to make sure I don't miss anything. Um, I've got some of the finances and expenses that are pretty straightforward, that align equity-wise with what all of our other, um, all of our other programs look at for that. One other thing uh that I could bring of note is that when uh, when we kind of got to the spot where I wanted to talk to Scott and say, let's try to move forward with bowling, I reached out to um Nate uh Bok at Ballard and they were in a conference called the Two Rivers Conference, which was schools that ranged from Carroll to Sigourney. Um, and I said, hey, we're, we're looking at starting a bowling program, what do you guys do? What, who do you get your schedule with? What do you do? Said, well, we're part of this conference, but he said, hold up, if, if you guys are starting a bowling program, here's how the numbers are gonna start to shake out. So if we were to join that conference and Green County joined that conference, we get to fourteen schools in that conference. Um, and Nate said, why don't we just go to two seventeen conferences and it would be more local? Um, so essentially, what we would do next year, and it seems like all schools are on board for this, is we would join what uh we'd haven't named a conference. It'd be a combination of the Raccoon River and the Heart of Iowa schools to make a bowling conference. Um, off the top of my head, it would be us and Green County, who are the only two in the Hoi Ak who have it, ADM, Gilbert, Ballard, Bondurant. Think I'm one short. Um, but that would be a seventeen conference. You can have twelve dates, um, so we could fill, we could fill all of our dates with those schools and go home and away if we wanted to. We could get creative and have maybe like three key rivals that we play home and away for six and then three others that we play either home or away and then three maybe tournaments that we go to that are different. Um, we can get creative with the scheduling, but I think the uh, having a conference obviously helps us get some conference accolades. So at the end of the year, there'll be a conference tournament, um, where everyone would go and compete and you could get all conference and it would make it feel like all of our other sports, um, to be able to be part of a conference there. Almost similar to what we do in tennis when we join with the North Central Conference to get uh conference games out of, out of that. And we actually won them, boys last year, um, North Central Conference tennis. Yeah, I think that was uh, the rest of the, the rest of the stuff in here, if you have any questions on, I think is pretty straightforward. But those were some things I wanted to bring to your attention, um, some benefits and some concerns to share.
Do you have a head coach identified?
Uh, do not have a head coach identified and um, as you're aware, it is, finding coaches is becoming harder and harder, um, eh eh, in the day and age. Um, I, uh, we may have a job opening or two, that we have two or three uh coaching openings that we would put with and maybe there would be a potential candidate for a job, an elementary job or something, that's maybe far-fetched. I do believe that Scott Walkner would be interested in getting his coaching endorsement. Um, but there's also like a little bit uh that's from me that says, you know, maybe there needs to be a separation of the owner of the Sports Bowl and like the, the team. Um, and maybe they can work in collaboration together. I don't have anyone identified, but uh, I certainly would take some interested candidates and I think there will be some people who are interested.
So we'd be looking at one head coach for both uh, uh, boys and a girls?
Right now, I think it's one head coach for both boys and girls and I, I think that's probably for the foreseeable future, um, unless the numbers were to really grow. Um, if we started getting into the twenties or thirties, um, you know, maybe we consider, Steve and I talked down and we bring a proposal to, to split into two coaches if we're getting heavy on one or the other side. But I think the way that bowling's set up, it, it, it works pretty well for one coach to be able to see it um, and one coach to be able to take them to meets. Um, they also, bowlers don't typically practice five days a week like a basketball. Um, it's maybe more of a uh, two or three day a week practice and one day a week competition. So maybe they're not practicing on Wednesdays. Um, or taking a day off here or there, the bowlers don't practice nearly as much as uh, say, a team sport does. So therein, one coach splitting it feels a little more appropriate than having two coaches to oversee.
When would practice be?
Um, it, it probably would be up a little bit to Scott. Um, we sat down and I, I walked through all of my concerns and things that I'd like to see on their end. And he said, he, he, if we can do this, I'll get you in here when you want to get in here. Practice would probably be uh, I, I, I don't see a world where it wouldn't be a three thirty to, to four thirty, five o'clock, five thirty type of situation. Walk over to Sports Bowl right after, uh, I don't see it being later. Um, a world where it could be later is if we end up in a situation with a large number of dual sport, maybe bowler's basketball, and then we need the basketball coach and the bowling coach to work together. And then maybe there's like some ebbs and flows to that schedule. But if we're not looking at a lot of dual sporting there, um, I think that you're gonna look at a three thirty practice right after school.
You mentioned previously you didn't have a lot of interest in dual sport situation, right?
We don't have, there, there was no interest in the dual sport for the people who filled it out in grades nine, ten, eleven and twelve. I know there's some dual sport interest lower than that, because I know a couple of them personally. Um, also, bo- bowling will lend itself to this. Um, Coach Struck, the boys' basketball team, just for an example, um, their, their practices bounce around quite a bit because of gym availability and how do you get into the big gym? The girls' program needs in there, I have to run a wrestling meet, it bounces a little bit. Bowling also lends itself to being able to practice without like the rest of the team there. So if you do have a dual sport bowling kid, um, and Coach Struck has a morning practice, he could go to that three thirty practice. Or if Coach Struck would have to have a three thirty practice, I, I'm guessing Scott Walkner's gonna be pretty willing to open up the, the bowling alley to get kids in there. He's uh, he, he lives and breathes that bowling stuff, so. I think you've got some flexibility if you do get to that dual sport kid. The same type of flexibility that we've ran in the spring for fifteen years now, twenty years, which is chaos, but we make it work.
That's why you make the big money. It's good to see that you've done your uh, uh, work with the Booster Club too, to have them. You know, it's, it sounds like you've got a commitment of sorts.
Yeah, the Booster Club indicated that they're, they're very excited for potential bowling. And then I think some of that, that excitement goes back to the untraditional kid that's going to get involved. Um, just seeing kids get involved that maybe aren't typically getting involved.
I don't wish out of questions, anybody else got any?
So just to be clear, we're voting tonight to be, to, to initiate the program, right? To get it started for twenty-five, twenty-six?
I would look at initiating it and starting a program for twenty-five, twenty-six and just, just know that like you said, there's gotta be some flexibility. If we get two girls out, probably consider looking at what a co-ed looks like. If we get up to that six, I, I think we try to throw a girls' team out. Um, eh, eh, I think bowling injuries are a little less, uh, typically a little less. I wouldn't consider an injury to maybe, you know, derail. I wouldn't consider an injury to maybe, you know, derail a team. There's going to be some flexibility. There's going to be some ebbs and flows. It's not going to be, I think, as, uh, I don't think it's going to be as easy as tennis was. I, I, I just think there's going to be, it's going to take a little bit of time to build it. Tennis came out really strong and they're both great programs. I think they'll, they'll take a little time to grow this one.
So I think your answer is yes, we're starting a program. With a motion and a second.
Well, I'll move approval of the initiation of a bowling program for the 25, 26 school year.
We have a motion and a second to begin a high school bowling program as presented by our athletic director, Dustin Smith, tonight. And I appreciate his answers. They were, there's a lot of questions on something this new in a way that while we are a defending state champ on a bowling program from 30 years ago, it came and went and now we're trying to re-institute it.
They, they did have some AAU championships. It was not a sanctioned sport until like 1996, so.
Yeah.
But they, we did, we do have some bowling legacy in the community.
Look up and see all your state championships for already a state champion.
Shout out to, I'm sure Joe's watching. Uh, Joe missed his opportunity for questions, but he can, if he needs to come and sit down and talk athletics, let me know, Joe.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Dr. Smith, you have something else to do. We have a bowling program. Thank you for not wasting your time tonight.
Yeah, you bet.
5.3, our at-risk dropout prevention plan, and it is our annual review of said.
Yep, we're required to get this in front of the board every year. You'll see very minimal changes as highlighted in green additions, um, a couple of subtractions. Really a lot of substance there in regard to the changes. Community learning series that we helped bring to Nevada is listed. Four-week summer school is crossed out. We still do credit recovery and we still, Mrs. Ginn still works with students in the summer. That's more that we don't have what we had years ago, which would have been more of a traditional come in, sit down this time to this time. It's more a thing of monitoring students online. Dr. Enzrother mentioned Zello, career planning. That's, I cap went away. You may recall approving Zello a year or more ago. They added the individual senior meetings that are happening. Elizabeth and Jody do some grant writing for us that, uh, benefits their program. They added that and I think those are the only real changes, so. I would just add that if you look at student family resources in our community, I, I think it's pretty impressive. And not just the school district, I think our community at large will know some things that we can be proud of and offering people assistance.
Call me the boomer in the conversation, but when you sit there and look on page 24, and it reads regards to the personal social, it's kind of a 420 prime substance abuse intervention. And I guess, because I've worked and spent time around people, I guess 420 is a celebrated date in the calendar.
Typically has a, a connotation to marijuana usage.
I believe, I, I believe that might be a YSS program that our middle school brings in to, yeah, try to combat that.
Andrew, I won't bring it up with me.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just think that it's a little close. We live in those times. Page 19, quite a list of, um, staff service, education design. That just tells me you were the superintendent because a lot of this stuff rolled out in your tenure.
Well, I think we've taken advantage and put some time in to try to make as much available as we can, so. And some of these have had some collaboration to them, so. Appreciate that support in the community.
So.
For motion?
I'm that guy.
I move approval of the annual review for the Nevada Community School District's at-risk, at-risk dropout prevention plan. Second.
We have a motion and a second that we have just conducted our annual review of our at-risk and dropout prevention plan. And we have discussed it almost ourselves to support it and we will in turn move to a, a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Lena. 5.4, M A G application.
Yep, likewise with the plan. Annually, we bring the opportunity for modified allowable growth to you to support our at-risk program. Of course, there's a portion of that, uh, that gives us additional authority. And then we levy a portion of that to fund our program, so. Not much different than it's been for many, many years.
We approved it. Now we're going to fund it.
We do have to fund, yeah. Those, those are some local dollars that are in our levy for our at-risk program, but we do get a sizable amount of authority for our overall budget.
I move approval of the modified allowable growth application for our at-risk dropout prevention program.
Tom, did you say something?
Yes, second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the dollars to fund our, uh, allowable growth application for our at-risk and dropout prevention as found in the board packet tonight. Any questions? There are none. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We have new dollars flowing. So we have the Woodward-Grandwood Administrative Cost at SBR.
Yeah, School Budget Review Committee, um, I'm going to ask you to table that. I hope that, uh, Woodward-Grandwood would have that data to us by the time we met tonight, but they don't. You didn't get anything today, right? Yeah. So you'll table that. We'll, when they get that to us, we'll bring it to you at the next meeting.
Motion to table 5.5.
So moved? Second.
Motion and a second to table 5.5 and to be brought back at our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
5.6, Story County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Yes, so 10 years ago, a couple of you were here and, uh, the county asked that we approve the mitigation plan. There was quite a bit, quite an extensive process last time that I was a part of, had the pleasure to be a part of. This time around, it was more of a review of the plan. Obviously, there are pieces of that plan, it's quite large. There are pieces of that plan that were automatically a part of, right, with crisis mitigation countywide. They asked us to identify specific pieces for our little, for our entity. You can see from some of the planning notes that I have here. 10 years ago, we indicated some, uh, improved communication systems from the classroom and building-wide intercom. We've, we've done that, as you can see, we've, in the update process, when we went through that last year, we indicated we're done. The other one was, uh, whether, uh, buildings, the safety at the new baseball field. So that was contingent upon the build house, which is now done. At the time, it was listed as in progress. Anything that we wanted to add? I did, as you can see there, the Homeland Security, $50,000 per building grants, which by the way, uh, Tammy and I just, that is done. Tammy and I just submitted for reimbursement. And then after that, I still have to do the quarterly report, which I've really enjoyed. So that's been quite a process, quite a process with that grant. But all of that work is done with the upgraded cameras and door entries and they are synced. So we're just trying to get that grant wrapped up. And then, uh, yeah, that was really the only thing that I, that I added at the time that we were trying to, to do that fit what they were looking for here, so. Not much new there, but every 10 years, they ask every entity to approve your updates, so.
So we're caught up?
We are, and it was a single meeting this year, one evening, so at least our part was, so.
Move approval of the Story County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan update for 2024?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Story County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan for our school. Yeah, I've got it right over here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Busy action, uh, agenda tonight. Consent agenda, minutes, bills, personal fund readers. I could get some input. I hope everybody took time to look at it. Nice to see that we had a higher with no resignations. So this new baseball coach you got, is that somebody who lives here in town?
Um, he doesn't. Uh, he actually currently teaches at PCM. He has taught at Colonesco. Recently was coaching at Colonesco. Um, and they have changed their regime. Their head coach resigned and they did some slides and looking for a new opportunity, a larger school. The gentleman actually, uh, does some assigning of lower-level officials for us. He's big into the officiating world. Really nice guy. And I think the kids will like being around him.
Good. Congratulations. Being lucky is not a bad thing.
He's a, he's a, seems like a really, really kind-hearted guy who, uh, I think will, will help us with our baseball program.
Good to hear. Thank you to Tammy for bringing back the December 2nd meeting notes to reflect the, the students that presented to us that night. They were very good. And I thought posteriors should reflect not just their first names, but their last names. Still one retirement?
Yeah.
Got it.
I do think we're going to get another one, but it won't be a part of the early retirement program.
How do we determine the dollars? I had a, my chances stand around with Gary Vasey, longtime Nevada coach and member of the community, and I see his name from time to time there. How do we determine the dollars, the differentiation on the officials and just short story, not a long story?
I can't do it in a short story.
Skip it then. Okay. I admire your honesty.
Homework assignment.
I mean, you, you see the disparity and you think like, well, maybe that's, you know, they're the same activity or not, but it's just like, there's a difference.
There's a lot of leverage and it's not on our side.
So you're saying we're being collected?
And now the AAU folks, um, AAU folks have gotten into and they've bumped the prices up because they charge 15, $20 at the gate and they can kind of pay officials what they want to and officials want more money. We're on, we're on the wrong side of officials.
Why don't we grow around?
We do. We've got some. But they know what they're worth too.
Nice. Well, fortunately, it would appear by just attending some football games that our gate revenue had to be pretty impressive this fall.
Yeah, we did well. Being relevant, especially when you've got two home games to end, you need to be relevant there at the end, so that was very helpful. I asked, I asked Coach Cleeman to make sure the teams are relevant well into seven, eight, and nine.
Should be part of his annual review.
It, it is a little bit. Hey, you need to, we need to pay some bills here, Coach Cleeman.
I hope he watches this. Helps out, Annie. So everything proceeding along on the new playground? As we had discussed?
Yep.
Good.
No snags as of yet.
Anybody see any questions on any bills or anything that, uh, they'd like further information upon?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as given to us tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7.1, board member comments.
Have you made any more progress with like the potential new phone policy?
Well, we had our first, um, committee meeting in December. So in November, we kind of gathered some people up and got our committee ready to go. December, we met. We, um, kind of established some norms and things that we were going to work through. January, I've got a handful of schools I'm going to reach out to. We've got another meeting next week. So we're going to go, uh, find a few schools that are doing some things and do a little bit of a visit and get some ideas and hear from teachers, hopefully students and admin, so we get a kind of a rounded perspective from it. So chugging along, pretty close to the timeline that pre we presented in, gosh, is that October? Yeah, so, yeah, about, about where we should be.
Good question. With a hat tip to Coach Cleeman, the high school football coach, head coach, and at our athletic director tonight. I'd like to compliment Anthony Eaton on a very well-performed season as he has now an appointment to represent Nevada in the Shrine Bowl here this coming summer. an appointment to represent Nevada in the Shrine Bowl here this coming summer. Nothing?
Next meeting, but not, not yet. I have stuff.
You're holding it back?
Holding it back.
Well, you got a plan. We'll go with that. All right. Our next meeting, we, this is our January, so our next meeting will be here in virtually a month on February 3rd. And I would like to think we'll all be here and Joe can join us again.
I will not be here, February 3rd.
You won't?
No, I will not be.
All right. Well, thank you for letting us know. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Appreciate our audience tonight and their input and helping us make